And Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Thacker.
Members of council, each of us arrives as individuals with unique ideas and experiences, but all with a desire to fulfill the needs of others. I ask that you use reason, wisdom, and empathy in your decisions today to take into account the implications your decisions will have now and in the future. We should all plant an acorn, even though we may not live to hear the wind rush through its leaves or the joyous laughter of children playing in the comfort of its shade. We plant the seed for the benefit of the future generations. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Present.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Councilmember Spar.
Here.
Let the record show, all seven members of council are present. Minutes from January 17th, regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any corrections, deletions, comments? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Long Committee Planning, Councilmember Leopard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
Yes, thank you. A Street Sidewalk Sewer Committee was held January 23rd, 2022, at 5:15 PM in Tiffin City Hall Council Chambers. Attending were committee members Cheyenne Thacker, Kenneth Jones, Kevin Reesner, Stephen Leopard, along with City Engineer Matt Watson, Public Works Administrator Brandon Burner, City Law Director Brett Howard, Mayor Dawn Yanatuno, City Administrator Dale Thornton, Finance Director Kathy Kaufman, City Council Members John Spar and Vicki Wilkins, and Clerk Ann Forrest. Thacker called the meeting to order. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 23-3, 23-4, 23-5, and any other business presented. Item 1, Brandon Burner informed the committee of mayor's request for legislation 23-5, 2024 Road Salt Acquisition. This is in regards to the ODOT State Bid Process. By going through ODOT, we are able to acquire better bids and pricing. To be part of the program, council must pass a resolution by April 30th, 2023. Law Director Howard asked if we would need to pass the legislation under an emergency due to time constraints. And Brandon, and Burner thought we would not, sorry, and Brandon Burner thought we would have enough time to get our application in without passing through an emergency. Leopard moved to have the law director prepare the necessary legislation and ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT Road Salt Contracts awarded, or the city administrator to competitively bid for the purchase of road salt. Reesner seconded the motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. Item 2, Watson informed the committee of mayor's request for legislation 23-3, CSO 24 and 30 Inflow Reduction Program. The project was nominated to the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, WPCLF. The city has been selected to receive a $5.9 million loan, but $4 million will be granted in principal loan forgiveness, which is essentially a $4 million grant. The term of the loan and interest rate are to be determined, but the interest rate will be a below-market rate. The city has received the maximum amount allowed for the grant. Matt asked for two pieces of legislation, one to obtain the WPCLF loan, and the second to authorize the city to bid out and enter into a contract with the company for the project. Reesner motioned for the law director to prepare a force-up legislation. Jones seconded the motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. Item 3, Watson informed the committee of mayor's request for legislation 23-4, OPCW Pavement Repair Program. In September 2022, council passed Resolution 22-22, which authorized application for Ohio Public Works Commission Loan for Street Paving. Recently, the city was informed that it's been selected to receive a $500,000 loan at 0% five-year term loan. That is the maximum the city could receive. The city chose a five-year loan to ensure that it would be paid off before the current road and bridge levy expires. The reason the city has gone after this loan is to help fund the various projects we have planned after the large expense of the Ellis Street Bridge Project and other projects. Because of inflation, road projects are becoming increasingly more expensive each year, and so it's better to do more projects upfront than to put them off. The paving projects for the year will cost $650,000. Leopard motioned to have the city law director prepare legislation and ordinance authorizing the city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, and recommend and execute a contract for the 2023 Street Paving Program and declaring an emergency. Perry seconded the motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. Item 4, Watson updated the committee of several projects related to the Long-Term Control Plan for Sanitary Sewer System, which includes Equalization EQ Basin Project, Main Interceptor Project, Benner Street Interceptor Project, Inflow Reduction CSO Basin 9, 10, 11, 12, and 15 Project, among other future projects, additionally EPA-mandated Long-Term Control Plan Implementation Projects. Letters of interest were reviewed by Watson, Burner, Thornton, and Kevin Hughes. They had a lot of consultants turning away potential work. Not one consultant submitted for every proposal available. This is due to the magnitude and size of the project. The companies may not have the staffing level to provide the necessary support for all projects. MS Consultants was selected for the Long-Term Control Plan Implementation Project. ACOM was selected for the EQ Basin Project. DLZ was selected for the Main Interceptor Project. ACOM was selected for the Benner Interceptor Project. American Structure Point was selected for the CSO 9 through 13 and 15 Project. Leopard expressed his concern both for how much pressure this work will put on the city engineer's office and for the river wall. Item 5, as part of the Long-Term Control Plan, the city must have annual flow monitoring completed. Currently, there are six locations with this monitoring. The data is provided to the city on a monthly basis and then presented to the Ohio EPA to show the amount of overflow events. ACOM provided this information previously. That contract is set to expire August 2023. The new contract will need to put additional flow monitoring systems to keep track of how these new sewer projects affect the overflow events in a year. Reesner motioned to have the law director prepare legislation to solicit RFQs for a new flow monitoring contract. Perry seconded the motion. The motion passed 5 to 0. Item 6, Watson gave an update on the bids that came in for the Urban Street Paving Project. The project resurfaces parts of West Market Street and South Washington Street. M&amp;D Asphalt received the bid for the urban paving project. The project will be completed between June and August. Reconstruction of part of West Perry will also take place. Helms &amp; Sons received that bid. The completion date will be by October 30th, 2023. DGL is helping with everyday oversight of the project. For the Ellis Street Bridge Project, utility relocation AT&amp;T is happening now ahead of the project. The contractor will start to mobilize to the site in March, preparing for construction, including inserting coffer dams. This work of preparation will continue until May 30th, 2023. Closure of the road will take place at that time. Construction will take place over the summer and fall with completion date of November 30th, 2023. Item 7, Watson gave an update on several private utility projects. Omni Fiber previously halted work in Tiffin. Omni Fiber plans to resume installation of its fiber network in February. With underground installation, Omni Fiber has updated policies with regard to sewer laterals after several meetings with city administration. The new policy will help protect citizens if sewer laterals or other underground utilities are hit during construction. Columbia Gas plans to do projects in parts of West Market Street, Scott Street, and Fourth Avenue. Aqua will be doing work on West Market Street in the five-lane area. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 6:30 PM.
Yes.
Madam President, I need to clarify. First paragraph, I was not president at the meeting.
Oh, sorry.
In spirit, yes.
I thought I heard you. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Reesner.
I think under item 6, instead of West Market Street, it's East Market, right?
Okay. I'll check back at my notes.
Eman.
Well, I think it's West Market.
Oh, no.
Councilmember Leopard.
M&amp;B paving instead of M&amp;D.
Oh, thank you.
And there was another thing.
This is what happens when you hear and you don't. Give me one second.
You're fine. That's a long report.
It is a long report. Which item, Steve?
It's under item 6 where it's referenced M&amp;D asphalt in the second line.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. No good thorough report. Thank you. Yes, Lord.
Just kind of as a follow-up, based on the report, the action items for tonight's meeting, you'll see under legislation, under item 1, ordinance 23-4 is for the salt acquisition. Item 2, regarding the CSO 24 and 30 Inflow Reduction Project, Resolution 23-5 is up for introduction tonight. It's the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Agreement and the application acceptance for that. Also, the CSO 24 and 30 Inflow Reduction Program, the construction contract authorization is ordinance 23-7. Under item 3, the pavement repair program for this year is ordinance 23-5. And then finally, the flow monitoring agreement, the RFQs for flow monitoring is ordinance 23-6. So all of those items are prepared for this evening.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, corrections? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Spar.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. We are now under committee to hold. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? Seeing none, we are now under the reports of the officers. Her Honor, Mayor Dawn Yanatuno.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sure you've all had the fun of navigating around work being done on West Market Street. As I told department heads this morning on my way in, and I saw it again on my way here tonight, I get over in the right lane because I know the left lane is closed. Well, it says the right lane's closed. So I moved over to the left lane, and it says left lane's closed. So I am going like this down the road this morning. So this afternoon, I just stayed in the right side. So somebody is here to explain this. So before we get started this evening, we have Megan here from Columbia Gas to give us an update. So I'll let Megan explain all of that.
I have handouts to pass out to everybody. I'll let those go around first before I get started. Thank you for having me tonight, by the way.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Megan, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's Hunyer. Megan Hunyer.
Okay. I didn't want to mispronounce it with a name like this.
And how do you say yours?
Yanatuno. I'm a little cautious on how I say others. I see by these blue lines, it's right where I'm trying to navigate every morning.
Yes, we thank you for your patience. So what's going around there is a copy of the customer letter that was sent out to everybody who was impacted by our Market Street Replacement Project, as well as a small packet of the current and upcoming projects here in Tiffin. So as you mentioned, the Market Street Project has gotten underway. Essentially, what we're doing is replacing our old infrastructure. You know, the old steel pipe has served us well, but it's now, the cost to maintain it has now outweighed, you know, installing new pipe. What we'll be installing now, the plastic pipe is safer, more reliable, can bend with the earth. It'll benefit us for years and years and years to come now. So we thank you for your patience as this project gets underway. We'll be installing approximately 13,075 feet of new plastic pipe as part of this project, serving roughly 309 residences on sections of Market, Lindsay, Niles, Oil, Lightner, Sandusky, Benner, Orange, Maple, Carl, and St. Clair. And you can see the map there in your packet. In terms of timing, this is underway, as we all know, and we are working closely with the city. We've been in contact with Matt and Jason to ensure that we are well ahead of the paving project that is taking place. We should be done, our target date is the end of April, so we should be done well ahead of your June 1st paving timeline. So we are staying in close coordination to avoid any conflicts. So that's great. Our total investment on this project is $4,139,884. So it's a great investment here in the community for the infrastructure. I spoke with our contractor, Miller Pipeline, today. The project is running very smooth, he said. There's been no issues so far. We started the project on Lindsay so that we could get to Market Street as early as possible. The feed to Market Street came off of Lindsay, so that's why we had to start there. The main line is completed on Lindsay, actually, and they've already started on services there. The traffic is moving smoothly. We do have one lane shut down on Market Street, but it is revolving as we continue with the project, so it should keep moving smoothly as we go through. I think that's it on that project. Do you have any questions about the Market Street Project?
We're good?
Okay. And then as far as the other maps that are in your packet, the second half of the year, we're going to be moving northwest of West Perry and South Sandusky. We have a project, our Scott &amp; Wentz Replacement Project as well. For this one, we have 10,329 feet of new plastic pipe being installed. We're replacing 218 services on that project with a total investment of $2,344,596. And then the last map in your packet, we have a small project on Industrial Avenue right now as well. It's a carryover, I believe, from last year. The new main line is completely gassed up as of today. Working on making contact and replacing four new services right now, followed by a little bit of cleanup work. And this goes for the restoration on Market Street, too, but a lot of the restoration will have to be temporary at this time until the weather really turns for the spring and the asphalt plants and things open back up. But other than the hard surface restoration on Industrial, we will be finished on that project by the end of next week. So if anyone has any questions?
Megan, we do appreciate Columbia Gas being cognizant of the fact that we need to know what's going on, and they work very well, as you mentioned, with the city engineer and his staff. And we just really appreciate that. We've not had the same courtesy with a certain fiber company in town right now. So we greatly appreciate.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll take that back to the team as well. Thank you very much. Extra thank you. Wonderful. No questions? I will. Would you continue on? Thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Moving on, as you know, we have another opening to fill here at City Hall. We will be taking applications starting tomorrow for Nick's position as Director of Communications and Constituent Services. A completed application, along with resume and cover letter with references, need to be in to our HR Director, Deb Reamer, by February 21st. My hope and plan is to keep everything moving smoothly as we prepare for your new mayor in 2024. So tonight begins our department head's annual report, and rather fitting that we just mentioned Deb. Deb Reamer with Human Resources is our department head presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I would be standing over here, but it comes by here, so it doesn't work for me. So I will be standing right here if I could. All right, Nick, show in the beginning. You see the little chaos going over here? Without a doubt, I'll work this guy in in just a minute. Flip that page, Nick, if you would. All right. As you can see, this is many of my instances, every single day in HR. Kathy can relate. We understand, right? That is just me going in a whirlwind each day. And a lot of us do that, so.
We appreciate visual aids.
That is a true story. So, okay, this one. There's no better way to start the day and treat each day as your last day. Okay, I truly believe in that. You're faced with challenges, like we all say, that is normal for a lot of us, but at the end, it turns out very magical. You'll see that with great employees, and we really do have a wonderful group of department heads, employees, staff, is a really great place to work, letting you know that. All right, Nick, thank you for doing that for me. A typical day as an HR director, okay? I know this is going to be short, much shorter than last year, but I tried to get it down a little bit, so. Each day, you plan on what you're going to do. As we know, you hope to achieve the goals, and you set a goal in place. You get those little sticky notes all over your desk, and you try to take one down as you can. FMLA requests, BWC injury claims, and the follow-up that entails, which means like if somebody requires treatment or something, I have to make sure I get with them within a certain timeframe, the supervisor notifies me, and then I take care of the employee. By doing that, they come in to meet with me, I fill out the proper paperwork to make sure everything flows very smoothly for them, so there's no break in that coverage or the time that they may need to be off. It's called lag time, which is very important. Lag time means, and it's in my reports, but for saving time, I cut all that down. Lag time means when you sustain an injury, it comes into me, I immediately try to report it. That lag time, you'll see in here, makes a big difference in your claim and your money. So lag time is my goal. As soon as I hear about it, that's why I tell department heads, you need to let me know right away. There's a reason for that, there's cost involved. Lag time is the day that I receive it and the day I report it. You want that to be within like a day or so. Okay, there's an average, you'll see. But it's very important that I know right away, and that's why I preach to my department heads, I need to know as soon as something happens like that. Liaison with the benefit groups, I'm sorry, it takes care of like talking with the medical groups, the agents, dental vision guardian, infinitesors, working with the broker for enrollments, also our finance director and payroll manager with all that. We work together on that. Posting potential openings, as the mayor said, thank you. That's something I do as well. I receive the information from, say, the department head. They let me know what they're looking for, and then it's my obligation to make sure that gets posted. I send it to Nick in his role, and then we get it posted on our Facebook, and then if I need to put it to Indeed or all the substantial points we can. Right now, we have an opening, and we post it on certain sites, and it's made a big difference with the outsourcing. You know, get that word out, tell people, even word of mouth. Receive applicant information, that's a constant. I put it on applicant tracking sheet. Select who's going to be chosen for the interviews. In an instance, I'm interviewing now. Make contact with that person if I'm interviewing them. Make a list of either they receiving another interview or set up for an interview. I bring them in, and then once they've been interviewed, they don't get that opportunity to work for the city. I speak to them personally normally if they've been interviewed, or if they have not been interviewed, I send them a letter out of respect saying, you know, we received your information, but you are not going to be moving forward with the interview process. Make a job offer. That's what proceed with background check, physical. It takes time to do all this. Everybody has to have patience. It's not easy because you want them now. I understand that. Drug screen conducted, reference checks. I'm very adamant in checking reference checks for sure. That's one of the first things I ask is, you know, who can I, it can't be a personal reference, it needs to be a professional reference, somebody that's not your friend or your buddy. Okay? And proceed with orientation. Nick? All right, this one. Typical day again, enter new hires into the employee navigator. That is a brand-new system this year, which I really love. I'm learning it every day. Ninety pages of notes, I went, we'll just learn it on the fly, because there really wasn't a whole lot of time to do that, but I really enjoy that. It's something we can do. It started this year. It gives an opportunity to enroll in medical, dental, vision, voluntary, and regular life insurance. By doing that, what I mean is when an employee starts, it's up to me to enroll them in that plan online now, because now we do everything online, which is great. So there's paper trail, but I can do all the reports in my system, which is wonderful. I'm now able to pull up things I've never been able to do before, which today payroll needed something, within five minutes, I had it. That's something I could never do before. So in 12 years of last Friday of being here, I appreciate that change. Enter individuals into COBRA, if anybody knows what COBRA is. It's something we do when you start new. I have to enter you into a COBRA, which means if you were to leave someday, you're in that system, or if there's any changes, that you get a COBRA report. It's outsourced, per se, but then they pay the city if they go COBRA through the city. What that means is they're in that system, and if they go somewhere else, we have to send that in a small amount of time, and they can either say they would like the continuance of coverage, but it's full coverage of that premium. It's not a rate that they pay here. It's a big difference. It may be $2,400 compared to $175, okay? Big difference. That being said, the next is employee issues and concerns that may arise. That's a constant. As I said, you never know what's going to happen each day. It's something you cannot plan for, but you try to prepare for. Longevity, step increases, exit interviews, did one of those today. Longevity and step increases. The city's very privileged, I feel, to have longevity and step increases. You've got a chart for the step, you go to first, second, third, which really gives you something to look forward to, and when I hire new people, I tell them that. You know, you're at this level now, but in a couple of years, you're going to be at this level, and it's very exciting for them to hear that. And the same thing with the, and the step increases. Longevity goes for a certain timeframe, step increases are on a scale. Applicant tracking, as I stated before, flex spending is great. That's something that I preach and tell people. It's no benefit to the city, but it's definitely a benefit to our employees. It's kind of like you can use the It's kind of like you can use the government for something, and you get a tax break on it, but it doesn't cost you anything. Say you took out $1,000 for flex, and you're approximately 25% less, so you're paying 38.46 or 38.76, depending how it works out, sometimes 27 pays, 26 pays, 27's rare. Very rare. We don't want to have those very often, right, Kathy? Those are really hard to work with. She knows that for sure. That's the hard work she does in her department. So, that being said, flex is something you take out of the check biweekly. It's not something you can sign up for and you can cancel. It's something, when you're in, you're in, unless there's a lifestyle change, or of course, you leave the city, okay? So it's a huge benefit. It is, because it's like, you're not paying tax dollars on that, and then it's showing in your tax dollars at the end of the year that I only paid this much, where it's a big savings. Verification of employment for current and former employees, that's a constant. A lot of people with this school forgiveness, we received numerous forms for those that we had to fill out. Making yourself available for employees and department heads, that is a must, I feel, for people. When they come in and say, "Do you have a minute?", even if you don't, you have to make time for them, because they're coming for a reason. You should feel privileged that I want to talk to you. More to the list each day is different, and you cannot predict the day, for sure. You make yourself a list, you get all excited, and then you're lucky if you get two out of those 10 taken care of. Okay, Nick, got it? Thank you. My aching back, okay? This is an example of FMLA. FMLAs, we had nineteen FMLAs for 2022. That's a lot, actually, for a city, a tremendous amount. I worked at St. Francis, and I don't think we had that many there, so, but it's a great thing. It's a great thing for our employees. You have to work 1,250 hours, and you get up to 12 weeks' leave. And in here, I'm not going to go over the instances for you, it's just common knowledge, you can look that up, but it has to be a qualifying event. And by doing that, if you sustain an injury, and then maybe later in the year, you only use six weeks here, and then later in the year, in that rolling calendar year, you need six more, you can get that. But it's two different qualifying events, okay? And that's when you see me immediately for this. When I hear of somebody on here that they're on FMLA, or there's an instance, that's where the supervisor lets me know, or that employee is obligated to let me know in five days. If I hear about it, and no one's told me anything, I make sure I make contact with that employee. And then, once I do all that paperwork, I did one of those today, I meet with the employee, I make sure the flow of the forms is smooth, I give a fax number so I can fax it back for the convenience of the employee, which means, they don't have to go to the doctor back and forth. It's worked out very, very well. So, once I receive their information, I sit with them. They have 15 days to get back to me, okay? 15 days to make sure I get the paperwork. I send them a form, it's called a designation notice, which means, hey, I've got your stuff, you're qualified, you're good, all right? And you have to be here at least a year to qualify. All right, Nick? This one here, the poor man on the crutches. BWC, I'm the BWC Administrator, Unemployment Administrator, all those fun things that entails the HR position. Eight claims, that's really good for the city. Three with cases away from work, and two on transitional duty. This is where we have an employee that sustained an injury, and the HR department's responsible for getting all that PRRP paperwork, like I said before, to them, make sure everything flows. There's a PRRP report, it's called Public Employment Risk Reduction Program, and that's something I have to do a report every year, and there's a deadline by February 1st, and I give that to all my employees, that they have to post to the departments. So you know as department heads, you've seen that. It has to be, the mayor had to sign that for me, saying that it's right. Trust me, Mayor, it was right. Okay, I worked really hard on this one this year that I discussed with you. One of the hardest ones? Yeah. I walked her, and she was great. I said, "I'm just trying to educate you and show you these things, because it is interesting, things people don't know." Not always fun, but interesting. So I post it the 1st through the 30th of April, okay? It's imperative that there's great communication, and I can't stress it enough, because if I get a lost claim, which this year I did, two weeks went by, all that lag time went right out the window. So I'm somebody that, if I hear about it, I'm on you right away. I do the transitional duty. I develop forms that, if there's any way I can possibly bring you back, I'm going to bring you back right away. There's all sorts of things you can do, there are. So we have it in all departments. So if there's an injury leave, thank goodness we haven't had that many, but I try to bring you back as soon as I see all the paperwork. And then, the max days for somebody on a report, which is very important, too, even if they have, say, 280 days lost time, I max it at 180. And it takes the last, it takes the last four of the best five. Screw formula, but you'd have to do what I do to understand all that. We're not going to go into that, okay? I work with the Bureau, the Managed Care Organization, the TPA, Third Party Ministry. They do hearings. Sometimes I do hearings, Managed Cares, Medical Review, that's where they review all the medical paperwork with me. I have to approve or deny it for the city. All right, Nick? BWC injuries for 2022. This is very good knowledge to know, how good this city is and how great they do. Nine out of 10 claims remained medical only, equalling 10% lost time versus 50% in 2021. That's why I said, you've got to be on it. You can't let any time pass you. That's why it's that 24-hour period, I told you in my position, I have to be called and known, that way I can respond immediately and get things working. 3.2 days, that's an average lag time. Day from the date of the injury to date reported, that's where I report it, as soon as I know it, to the Managed Care Organization. State average is 18 days versus 4.5 in 2021. We are doing incredible. 3.2 days, they love us. When they come here and talk to us, they're just so excited that you're doing so well compared to other municipalities or public industries. Average lost days, 3.3 in 2022. 2021, we had 25.5. So we're doing something right, for sure. That's the communication. Make your people feel good when you talk to them. Don't feel like they're bad. They're not bad employees. Things happen to everybody. Seven out of 10 claims were employees 40 and older. Monday accounted for 40% of the injuries. I think that's Margarita Monday. I'm not sure. I really don't know what it is. Or it's been a long weekend, and then they had too much fun. So, medical bills for 2022, bless you. Providers charged $40,042. BWC paid $89.999.5. That's great, because what they do is, they put us in a system. It's called risk and reserves. They put you so much money for a claim. Lumbar strains are the worst. When it's a back, it's the worst, because they could put you from here to 15 years from now, and they average the cost that claim's going to cost you. So that's why we do everything we can to bring you back transitional duty, to do something. All right, so medical bills, I said Sedwick, the MCO savings, we've saved $31,077%, which is great. We're in a group retro program, which is wonderful. That means we do very well. Groups want us with them, which is very rare for municipality. They don't want all that, but we have great people that make sure they communicate with us, and if there's an injury, make sure we get with them and take care of it. Enter BWC premium experience calculation. All of that has formulas. I did see my person on the bottom, there fell, too much work to do, mechanicals, and a lady on top fell off our ladder. So when you're on a ladder, we watch people. Nick? All right, I'm getting there. As part of a great team of department heads and leaders, for sure, blessed to work with you all, it's so important to care about the people you work with and being available if needed, okay? And obviously, you're needed if they come and want to talk to you, or if they email you. If you say, "I'll get you an answer, and I'll get back to you," you better be good at your word, because they're going to remember you, and you're not going to build a good reputation if you wait four or five days. My goal is always 24 or 48 at the most. That's always a goal. Showing you care about your employees and them as a person, we truly never know what they're going through. We don't know what the night was before, but we need to understand and be available, or a good listener is all they may need. Some people just come in, and they just want to talk. They're having a bad day, they've got something with their family, and they just need to talk to somebody. That's what we're supposed to do, be available. Am I on there, Nick?
Sorry, we lost it for a minute.
Okay, it's all right.
Technology, it's lovely.
Okay, I'll start the next one, you keep going. You have to be empathetic, for sure. You have to have a heart, even when it's hard to do so. It's not. No one's ever going to know whether you like or you don't, but I'm not fake. I'm literally not fake with anybody, but I'm very consistent, I'll let you know. Showing you care, them as a person. It may take just a smile. Hey, how are you doing? Good morning, just walked by. Don't walk by somebody, don't say anything. Even if they don't like you, say, "Hey, how are you?", if they say whatever they say, that's fine. You showed you care, and you should. That's what it's all about here. It costs nothing to be in a good person. It really doesn't. And time to show you care. Don't have to, yeah. And that could change at no cost, but just being a person that took the time, I said, to show you care. That could change your day just by kindness. They want to talk to somebody. I'm the person that goes to grocery store, my daughter shuns, and I'll go, "Hey, I need to talk to the manager." She'll go, "Oh." And I go, "I just want you to know, I hire people," and I'd hire her in a minute. And they go, "Really?" I said, "Yeah." You need to reward them at the clerk station or Walmart, or... I always make it a point to do that, because you never know what makes somebody's day, even if they're having a good hair day, all those ladies like that. You guys really don't care. So make yourself visible, for sure. Don't hide. They're going to find you anyways, right, Dale?
They always find me.
Be courteous and respectful. If someone does not understand something, understand they're at a different level than you, okay? Build trust among your coworkers and be very engaged. Listen to them. Resolve conflict at the workplace by understanding that everyone has a different way of thinking and listening at all parties involved. This is very important. Understand your roles and responsibilities. Earn their respect, just don't think you should get it just because of who you are. We're all equal partners. I don't care what we do for a living, we're all equal partners. Your first impression is your lasting impression. And be a good listener, for sure. You see my little person, if they pop back in there? The city had 131 full-time employees, and we had 10 part-time employees. So that's 141 as of this last pay scale, I checked. During the year, when we have seasonal, we have 30-plus additional employees, because we've got the parks and rec, things like that. And it doesn't matter if they worked for us last year, we still have to bring them back up to the new year. Give them letters, make sure their wages are correct, make sure the raise goes from this to this because of their steps, how long they've been here. And if they're new employees, we start from the bottom up, so it's still the same amount of work. It's just updating the information. I have all of them in a spreadsheet to show their times, where they've been, and the years they've been here. Okay. Nothing, Nick?
Sorry, lost it?
Okay, we can try. We've been having some computer issues lately, haven't we? It hasn't gone very well. That's the one I want. If we could get it up, we can't carry it. There we go. Thank you, Nick! Okay, here. Hire people who are better than you are, then leave them, get on with it. Don't micromanage them, let them be on their own. You trust them to be here, let them move. Look for people who aim for the remarkable, who will not settle for the routine. Next one, Nick? We don't want to jinx it, do we, by keeping going? Almost there. Employee retention, train people well enough so they can leave. Treat them well enough so they don't want to. Do what you love, love what you do. I truly love what I do. I truly do. All right. Your positive action combined with positive thinking results in success. Always be positive, no matter what. You know, you're there making somebody else feel better. We can let ours go. Each day, we choose how we come to work, and we need to understand that our words may come at something someone needs to hear, as I said before. Showing kindness to someone that needs it most. You can make a difference just by being you. And this is the end. And as I promised, make each day magical, it'll all come together. Enjoy, I really enjoying what I do makes everything worthwhile. And let me see if I can get this to work. And it's magic, just like that. I'm done. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Anybody have any questions for Deb?
Anybody have any questions? She wanted to borrow my wand or my...
Where'd you get that from?
Wand or this?
I don't know.
I got this at Menards, months ago, knowing that I have to do a presentation, I thought, "Well, I got to tell you a really quick story that'll only take a second," right, Kathy? I come in to work with her at the same time, and I had this in my bag a couple months ago, and they're doing construction, I said, I go, I go, "Say, no, it's, are you kidding me? How are we going to work today?" Now, mind you, this is loud. Sounds like a vacuum, right? Doesn't it? It's in my work bag. I take work from every night. I'm searching the whole building, looking for this noise, and poor Kathy, bless her heart, is helping me. So I go to Mark Marquinhos, "What's going on?" He goes, "What is that noise?" I go back to my office, and I put my work bag, I went, "Oh." So I apologize to Kathy and Mark Marquinhos. That is a true story. I felt pretty embarrassed that day, because I was going to the police department to report something, because something was in our building, so.
That's it.
Well, she's not kidding when she says she is on top of it, because we had an employee actually coming into the building early for work and got hit by a car. They watched the car, the car still hit them, and they weren't going to claim it, and Deb found out about it and made sure she took care of herself, so she does do it.
Thank you, everybody.
She does what she says she does.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
John's got a question. I just want to know, Mayor, do the rest of the department heads know they have to have props?
Yeah.
I mean, she's set the bar pretty high here.
Couple of them sat, and they go, "I got to bring props." I say, "You don't have to bring props."
Oh, no, I think they do.
It's in charge.
He already warned us at his March 6 meeting, he'll be about an hour, and he's asking my husband to come, so that'll be your prop.
Snacks or something.
Snacks or something.
I'm already telling you, he's not allowed to talk.
Just make plans.
Yeah, I'm out that week.
Attendance is required. Okay, moving on with my report update on events. I am participating with a large group of area residents and Tiffin City School Superintendent Advisory Council. We will be evaluating data, investigate options, identify community concerns, and make recommendations as they move forward. It's a long process. They have about 70 people involved, and so it's a good idea, and they're trying to bring everybody together to come up with a big plan. Upcoming events in February, they will be launching the official ball rights chip for Seneca County at the Commissioner's Office on February 8 at 3:00 p.m. Chamber will be holding their annual event Casino Royale on February 11. It is a sold-out event. Nick and I will be taking an American Red Cross Adult First Aid CPR and AED blended course offered in conjunction with the Chamber. We have to complete an online portion prior to the in-person training. When done, we will receive a two-year Adult First Aid CPR, AED certification, and will be able to help someone in need. And I saw tonight, Nick, that we've got our stuff for us to fill out, and it's two hours. Sorry, I talked him into joining me with this. Cut-off date is February 28 to sign up for the Tiffin Police Department Citizens Academy. Classes start Sunday, March 19, from 12:30 to 3:00, and runs for 11 weeks. It is fun, very interesting, and I highly recommend participating in it if you could dedicate the time to attend. I did it the first year and thought it was absolutely phenomenal. Councilmember Jones has done it also. I think you have, too?
Yep, second year, yep.
It is a wonderful program. You have no idea what you're missing if you do not go. You do ride-alongs. You do crime scene investigation. I know that one night, I think, was on drugs. I'm like, oh, do I really want to go to that? And every time I've thought that, it was always very interesting, and you just have a whole new respect for our police force. They're wonderful people, and it's great to work right alongside them, and you will love it. And you really need to consider that if you have time. It's free. I think they'll still even feed you. They always have. So, I think you can get food. The food is free. Area restaurants donate it, and it's just a phenomenal project. And that's where Safety Week came from, is that same process through Sergeant Jared Watson. And so, both are his brain children, and those are his ideas. And because of the academy, a lot of those people work at Safety Week because of liking to work with Sergeant Jared. So, if you can, please sign up. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Questions for the mayor? Thank you, thank you. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. We are now under written communications.
We have mayor's request for legislation number 23-6, appointment to local Board of Tax Review, Michael Hayes.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-6 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Appointment to the Thomas Connor Memorial Commission, Nicole Miller.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-7 will also be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-8, Hedges Hillside Reconstruction.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-8 will be referred to the Lawn Community Planning Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-9, Tourism Contract for the City of Tiffin.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-9 will also be referred to the Lawn Community Planning Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-10, CRA Exemption Agreement.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-10, I'm sorry, will also be referred to the Lawn Community Planning Committee. Sorry, Steve.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-12, Appointment to Shade Tree and Beautification Commission of Ken Baker.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-12 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-13, Appointment to the Thomas Connor Memorial Commission of Jose Arenas Jr.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-13 will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-14, New Federal Sirens.
Mayor's request for legislation number 23-14 will be referred to the Recreation and Public Property Committee.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-23-3, to amend the 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108, to appropriate funds into the city administrator and general administration budgets. It's $3,500 plus $5,500 for a total of $9,000.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-23-3 has been prepared for tonight as ordinance 23-8.
And then there's Mayor's Letter of Appreciation to Robert Sigler for his service on the Shade Tree and Beautification Commission.
Mayor's Letter of Appreciation will be held on file in the clerk's office.
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. Okay. Seeing none, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 23-3, introduced by Ken Jones. Resolution authorizing the sale during calendar year 2023 of municipally-owned personal property which is not needed for public use, or which is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by internet auction pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 721.15D and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of resolution 23-3.
Resolution number 23-5, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, WPCLF, agreement on behalf of the City of Tiffin for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities involving CSO Basin 24 and 30 Inflow Reduction Project, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of resolution 23-5.
Resolution number 23-6, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Mary Franks to serve a term on the Americans with Disabilities ADA Advisory Committee from the effective date of this resolution until December 31, 2025.
This is the first reading of resolution 23-6. Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, I'd like to ask for passage of resolution 23-6.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of resolution 23-6. Is there a second? Councilmember Spar.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes.
Resolution 23-6 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 23-7, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving the appointment of Nicholas D. Dutrow as the city administrator.
This is the first reading of resolution 23-7. Councilmember Perry.
I guess I'll ask for passage of resolution 23-7.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of resolution 23-7. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Resolution 23-7 passes with a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations, Nick.
I was concerned, but congratulations, Nick.
Very well deserved.
Resolution number 23-8, introduced by Ken Jones. Resolution appointing Brent T. Howard, Director of Law, as a designee for Tiffin City Council and its individual members to attend a public records training session for purposes of compliance with ORC 109.43 and 149.43, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of resolution 23-8. Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of resolution 23-8 in suspending city council's three-reading rule and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three-reading rule for resolution 23-8 and immediate passage. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification purposes, Director Law Howard has a Zoom meeting, I believe, at the end of the month, so we need to pass this so he can be our designated person.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Resolution 23-8 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 23-4, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded, or the city administrator to competitively bid for the purchase of road salt.
This is the first reading of ordinance 23-4.
Ordinance number 23-5, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, and recommend and execute a contract for the 2023 street paving program, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 23-5.
Ordinance number 23-6, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for engineering, design, and consulting services for flow monitoring as part of the city's sanitary sewer long-term control plan.
This is the first reading of ordinance 23-6.
Ordinance number 23-7, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, and recommend and execute a construction contract for the CSO Basin 24 and 30 Inflow Reduction Project, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 23-7.
Ordinance number 23-8, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $9,000 into the city administrator and general administration budgets.
This is the first reading of ordinance 23-8.
That concludes the legislation.
Thank you. Okay, we are now under other business. Is there any business to come before, yeah, council this evening? Councilmember Leopard.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to set a meeting date for lawn community planning. That would be Vicki and Dan. How does next Monday work? Five o'clock?
I will not be in town.
Okay. Out the whole week?
No, just at night.
Okay. How about Tuesday?
Tuesday at 5:00 p.m.? Does that work for you?
I have wrestling at 6:00. It'll be done by then.
Oh, God.
Will be done by then.
Okay.
Okay. So, that'll be Tuesday, the 14th. I'd like to announce a lawn community planning meeting to be held Tuesday, February 14, in council chambers. Purpose of the meeting is to discuss RFL 23-8, 23-9, and 23-10, Hedges Hillside Reconstruction, Tourism Contract, and CRA Exemption.
Thank you. What was the time?
And any other business that may come before the committee.
You do realize it's Valentine's Day. Just pointing that out.
Pardon?
It's Valentine's Day. Just pointing it out.
Oh, you're okay, right?
We're good. You were good.
That's a gift.
Dan will take you to McDonald's.
He's got a better place to go.
Yeah.
Big bikes on the house.
I need to, yes, get with Dan and Ken about a meeting for Recreation and Public Properties for mayor's request for legislation 23-14. Can you do earlier that day, 4:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
Would 4:00 p.m. on the 14th work?
Sounds good.
Okay, so I'd like, okay, so I'd like to call a Recreation and Public Property meeting for Tuesday, February 14, at 4:00 p.m. in council chambers to discuss mayor's request for legislation 23-14, New Federal Sirens, and any other business that may be coming before us.
Just to clean it up a little bit, could we have that meeting at 4:30, and then Steve's immediately filing? Can we? That way, there's not a gap.
Yeah.
Is that all right?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Is that okay with you, 4:30?
4:30 is good.
And then we'll scroll right into that meeting?
Yep. It'll just modify the public announcement.
And then?
Yep.
Yeah. As labor and personnel, I want to thank these people for volunteering. If, I don't see an issue to have a, or a reason to have a meeting if nobody else in my committee does. No. Mr. Jones, would you?
No, I have no reservations. I've known Michael Hayes since grade school. Nicole Miller, I've got quotes from her from insurance. Ken Baker and I did Sandusky River cleanup and tree commission, and I got some information from the mayor on Mr. Araras, so I have no...
Okay, so we're good.
Okay.
In the, in the manner of transparency, there is a zoning board of appeals opening that we're trying to fill. It's tough to fill that one because it can be controversial. You know, and some people don't want to get involved in that, and so we do have an opening on that.
When's that got to be filled?
Soon as possible.
Soon as possible. Has anyone put in for it, or no?
No, we're making calls.
Okay.
We have talked to someone about that.
Okay.
I think we have someone who's committed to doing it.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm just trying to be transparent.
So are we.
Yeah.
So, we may have that one filled, and coming to shortly, and then mine are done.
All right.
How are you doing, Bridget?
Okay. No comment. I don't want to talk about it. Yeah, I got to work on that. Lord Eric, do you need a motion for that legislation to be prepared for the appointments if they're not having a meeting?
No, I'll just take it as a direction from the committee chair to prepare those for the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Any other business to come before council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone.